...of the United States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Just an FYI, if we have this on July fourth weekend, we're calling it a parade as far as our clothes. I hope we're done with snow by then. I take a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I move the agenda as amended.
Second.
The motion is seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Minutes for April 2nd.
Uh, look them over, look fine, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 2nd.
We have a motion.
Second.
And second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. They are approved. General public concerns. Sounds like everybody's good with us. Review and accept windmill ordinances. Is John coming down?
He did not say, I don't know.
Did he make it his?
Well, I've another...
No.
I'll give him a call.
Would you? I guess see if he's here or... These are the... Is this the version that he...
Mm-hmm.
Is what, do you have another version?
Nope. I just got copies for the press and that, so I'm gonna hand them to Kent when you guys go in.
Is John up there this morning? This is Carl, is John coming down to a board meeting?
There's several copies, if you want to pass them around in case somebody wants one.
Thank you. Goodbye.
He's on the phone right now, I'll be down soon to get to him.
Okay.
Pass that back around if you like.
Looks good to you too?
Yeah, I don't think...
I don't see too many...
A little over me.
I can't see too many things out of the ordinary.
Well, we can at least go over and start reviewing what... Unless we wanna wait and see how long it takes him to come down, or however you wanna do this.
John had agenda, let's go ahead and talk about it.
All right. How are... How do you wanna proceed? This was...
Well, I'll start off. I read through it two or three times, read it again last night, and I would like to see something in there on each site that they negotiate with the county and the county engineer, especially on, uh, infrastructure. There's stuff in there on infrastructure, but I'd like to see something where they have to talk with the county engineer and negotiate which route they're coming in, where they're at, what they're gonna tear up, and look at it beforehand and behind. There is a little bit touched on it, but I think it should be a little stiffer, a little more on it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, I researched it upside and down, one side and down the other, uh, and understand that this is maybe not worth the word, but very generally similar to Webster County's ordinance. But the differential ordinance-wise is that all of their regulatory language is with the Mid-American power company.
Hello, Dylan. Yes. All right, thank you much. Bye. John will not be with me.
Okay.
So, that, um, and just for the sake of simplicity, to use examples, like I said, so this is their ordinance as the ordinance is, which without the addition of their agreements contractually with Mid-America, this ordinance doesn't work very well for us, whereas the Cassuth County ordinance, their entire ordinance spells out what Webster County has contractually with Mid-America. They're relatively similar, but this doesn't include the language of the, the things like Dave mentioned, roads, tile, uh, deconstruction, they all, all those things are separate with Mid-America, and I think from everything that we've know or found out, and some other you guys have checked with them, I think they've got pretty good agreements with them. I mean, I think it's worked quite well with Mid-America and Webster County, but their ordinance is very weak, but their agreements with Mid-America are actually pretty decent. But that, this does not contain that language. They have the contractual stuff with the power, with the power company, and the other thing about that is, Mid-America is a public utility company, and I think it's, from what I understand, been a bit of their modus operandi, the way they operate, to come in, visit with the county, sit down, go through all the things that need to be gone through, and they've done a, a pretty darn good job of it. But to have an ordinance without that in there, another company that's not a public utility, that's not a Mid-America, could come in and say, "We can meet everything that's in your ordinance, so you really can't have a leg to stand on to say, 'We don't agree with that.'" Uh, I don't think that's written in here, because we don't have the, uh, we don't have the regulatory language in here. So that's the gist of it. And that's what makes, I think Webster County's got a pretty good setup there, but most of what made it good was the fact that they had the good working relationship with the Mid-America company, and public utility, client's company, and they've got very sound, solid contractual language with Mid-America for that project, and that's not in here. It's just their basic ordinance doesn't have the other business with the contracts with Mid-America. So, that's the only problem.
Can I ask you a question? Are we, we aren't, this isn't sold to Mid-America, right?
No.
Not no.
So this could be sold to...
Anybody.
Midland could be sold, and I'm just using names, I'm not saying that Midland or Cornbelt or, who's the one down in Fort Dodge? What's their power there down there? They have another one down there?
Yeah.
Whatever it is. So I, I guess I'm, I'm, when we set it up saying that we're doing it with Mid-America or we're doing... This company is the company that's trying to put this together, right? Not for Midland or not for Mid-America. Someone's gonna buy it, but it isn't, so I guess that's my...
Right, and I...
We use names and we aren't, those names really aren't...
Well, I'm just using it as an example, what's lacking in here, this is a...
The thing is, how can you, you set the regulations when you don't even know what's coming in?
Well, and I think one oversight maybe on John, a few meetings ago, you guys did, um, suggest adding to the application requirements on page two, uh, road use agreement, town and tile agreement, and those were not added to the application requirement list, so...
There they are.
Yeah, they're in the back page.
They're number fourteen, fifteen.
Okay, can I have... Is that...
Yep.
Okay. So I think that might, Dave, to your point, if they have to have those when they apply, I, I think that might solve that issue. That, that's gonna have to already be in place for the application to permit it.
So fourteen and fifteen are road use agreement with secondary roads, Hummel County engineer. Fifteen is drainage tile agreement.
Yep, thank you.
Page three, the fourteen and fifteen on the requirements.
So those areas are covered.
Would you consider that covered, Ben?
I, I think so. Uh, I talked briefly with Webster County last week, and they said probably the best thing that they did, uh, they had, obviously they had meetings before they started construction, but then once construction started, they had weekly meetings as far as status updates, uh, prog, more or less progress reports on how the project's coming, you know, and then the county would address weekly basically issues that they see with the road being torn up or, uh, you know, they, they would basically address on a weekly basis issues that have been called into them by people in the area or that their building and road operators had found, so...
Well, my question on this for drainage tile, Ben, would this be for just, uh, our drainage tile, or would we put slash, what about private tile? I mean, we don't know about private, some of the private tile, we don't have a clue what's out there.
Right.
You know, they cut across, they out here by High Cap, they cut across that, and I know that transmission line isn't out there, but we don't, we, we don't have maps out there unless we have county tile, um, Dick Name's ground. If he has private tile, would, would, would we want them to provide so that these people would know?
Well...
Would that be covered under private?
That'd be under, that'd be under the contract with the landowner.
That's why I think we put slash, private?
And I would know, keeping my part of the application, is that, is that site plan of where they, where they intend to put them. So at a minimum, all of those landowners in adjacent areas.
I, I seen it, I looked through, read through forty-six pages of a contract last night, and it covered all of the private tile in there.
Okay, well, I didn't know, I've never seen it.
Yeah, I, I sat and read through one of them last night, and it covered their, their private tile.
All right.
Covered compaction, crop damage, um...
Does it do like we do and they...
They do a lump sum upfront.
So it isn't like on a two-year, three-year?
No, it was just a lump sum for compaction.
Okay.
So much a foot for trenching, so much a foot for putting in the roads. It is pretty well covered for the cost to the landowners, and I'm assuming they use the same contract with everyone, maybe not, maybe they tweak them a little bit, I don't know, but that's the landowner's diligence to go through the contract with them.
Right.
To cover their ex, their expectation. Our, our responsibility is the roads and the county mains.
Right.
If you looked at that, does that speak in that contract about decommissioning?
Yes, it did.
The company take full responsibility, have money set aside if that...
The way, the way it read, yes, it did, uh, not immediately, the way, partway through, the, the funds would build up to a certain point, and from there on, it was set at a, at a, uh, the money was held private, you know, independently for the decommissioning.
They did have it.
They did have a fund set up to decommission them, to, I think, forty-eight inches below the ground surface.
Which left four feet?
Yeah.
I don't know, but that's really enough. I mean, I think that's a... Some of them are six, and regardless of how you, many feet, four to six to eight to ten, there's a humongous amount of concrete left in the ground.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's bound to, if that, you know, this is a worst-case scenario, granted, I'll admit that. If they were and they were decommissioned and dismantled, uh, that ground will be basically probably worthless after that. I mean, I don't think you're gonna have very good, you know, and granted, it's a not, you know...
Well, in that twelve-foot circle, yeah, it'll probably not produce a lot.
It's not gonna be too spiffy, and, and obviously the low, the further down you can get below the surface, probably the better off you're gonna be.
Yeah.
You know, once we get these details worked out, if we do in fact, I've had conversations with lots of guys in the county, I had three guys that's opposed to it, two of them ran here this morning, and one of them was here last month. I know a lot of guys don't like it, but the majority of them do approve it. I think it's our, our job to sort out the details and see what we want to go, what's forward, what's good for the county, it's not gonna make everybody happy.
No.
I know these two gentlemen are very much opposed to it, I've talked to each one of them, we had a man here a couple weeks ago who was very much opposed to it, but ninety-nine percent of the people I've talked to think we ought to get something worked out. As to what the details ought to be, I don't know.
My concern is that you work the details out, because you're, when you're trying to compare Webster County's agreement with a public utility, and this thing which is gonna be with a four-fotting commercial operation, that you make doggone sure that it's covered. You don't, you don't, you don't believe it, "Well, they'll do the right thing." It ain't gonna happen. The shit hits the fan why it ain't gonna happen.
That was, Bruce, that was my example, and oh, not to pick of, you know, not just because Webster County's close and because we know that they worked with Mid-American, that was the example I was trying to make, is that they worked out things contractually with a public utility company, and it, it's a sound, you know, agreements. Whereas when you just don't know, that, and right now, we, we don't have a public utility that we're working with, like Webster County did, then we have a different scenario, our ordinance needs to contain that language, and this one does not. That's my concern, and that's just, like I said, just as a quick example in a very close proximity, Cassuth did the...
Didn't John do what we asked him to do, is to basically design this thing according to the way Webster County's...
Their ordinance.
Their ordinance.
But they don't have the language that...
Well, then why didn't we tell him to put it in there if that's what we want? And then we can do it, move forward.
He'd basically have to assimilate all of the contracts that Webster County has with Mid-America and incorporate that into here, and then you would have essentially about what Cassuth County's put together, except for the setbacks.
Yeah, the setbacks are, you know, they, they come and go, I mean, they, one's longer, one's shorter, you know...
Because I, I said from the get-go on it, Cassuth County's is not prohibitive, it just spells out that the companies will come, they talk to the zoning people, they talk to the supervisors, the agreement is upfront, not, they come in and look at like, "We can abide by all of this stuff," and then after the fact, "We don't have a leg to stand on." That's, uh...
There's seventy pages of contracts between Mid-America and...
And, you know, no fault to John, and like Bruce, I agree with you, uh, this is confusing, and he was looking at the ordinance, and I think he tried to tweak it favorably, but without, I guess if Jerry says there's seventy pages, I'll say there's seventy pages.
Webster County's ordinance is only like two or three.
Right.
I mean, the agreement with Mid-American is a completely separate factor for it.
What we would have with, with any company that comes in.
That's Y or Z.
Well, if, I might say possibly that's true if it's a public utility, but if it's a four-fotting company, I don't think you can make that assumption. I think they're gonna base their standard of building anything at the bare minimum of what they have to follow.
I think if we'd sit down and negotiate with each application, get all that worked out, have it in the application part of it, I think we'd be all right.
And I'd agree with that, as long as we're, the wording is that that has to be accomplished to, before they'd ever move forward, and I don't know as if this quite accomplishes that.
Unless they've had contact with the proposed builder, what kinds of demands are they making? What, what will allow them to come, what won't allow them to come? They've done it a lot of other counties in different states, what, what are they looking for here in their application?
Um, well, nothing, they made no demands whatsoever.
Okay.
Um, I guess the one setback that you guys, I've already talked to you guys about this, but the one setback that you, um, and I noticed even in your revised, um, copy, it's a thing, right, so the property lines on, uh, I don't know, this page, um, I think upon direction from youth to mimic Webster County, the property lines, one hundred fifty feet from property lines, um, that's Webster County's language. You guys had initially set one and a half times the total height, and that is prohibitive. So I think your direction to John was to mimic Webster County, which is what they did, so that would be the only one that, what he did, excuse me, so that's the only one that is now corrected in the version that, in the revised version, picking it up today.
So there, what you're saying is, the way I understand it is, uh, we had one and a half times, and this new version is one hundred and fifty feet?
Or one time.
Or one time the tower height? And that's...
One hundred and fifty feet, however the setback may be, less than two adjoining property owners are within the...
There's two separate setbacks.
Project, one time tower height.
That's what John said, I, I don't know.
Page one's got a whole, you know, one hundred and fifty feet, a thousand feet from a neighboring unit, one and a half meter diameter, but then you go to the second page of going to one, one and one-half times tower height, fifteen feet. See, the, the setbacks, there's a separate setback that has totally different numbers than one to here, which one's that?
So the second page, according to the notes I took meetings ago, the second page looks to be what you originally discussed, kind of a one, so probably, and then page one of his separate documents looks to be Webster County's setback. Maybe he was giving you options for your... That's what I wanted to get, the second page is what you initially discussed, because it matches the numbers.
And then page one is the stuff that's on this contract, isn't it?
Because that's what you asked us to do, that's my understanding, that's correct.
That's the way it looks.
Yep.
I have a question for you. Special safety standards and designs, I think this has to be on page three, I believe, of the, of the table. Uh, number one, clearance of rotor blades must be within an inch of a twelve feet clearance between the lower point of the ground. You wanna drive your combine into that at a tip speed of a hundred plus?
Well, I don't, and I will say too, when we're talking about setbacks and such, one hundred and fifty feet from property line, just that right there does not seem correct. And a thousand foot from a neighboring dwelling, I'm gonna suit, I'm gonna take the assumption a neighboring dwelling could be someone living in it, and a thousand feet away, that's not far enough, period. I don't care, we're gonna run into issues that we have no idea what we could get ourselves into, but it, it's just not, it's just not correct. It just isn't gonna fly that way.
The other thing that I see missing is that there's nothing in here about a procedure for complaints.
What, what's the left?
Procedure for complaints, noise complaints, quicker complaints, remit, you have absolutely no procedure about how those would be handled. And I will tell you through the point of other areas, when somebody files a complaint, the cost of the stuff that has to be done, it's all, you gotta figure out whether it's a complaint real or not, is very, very expensive. What happens is, people don't file them because they don't have the twenty grand to pay for the, the work that needs to be done, it's a dedicated complaint. If you don't have anything in here about how...
I got a whole pile up in the greatest counties, I haven't seen that anywhere. That must be something in Nebraska.
That's usually your normal ordinance to handle any noise issue. You should have a, some sort of ordinance, just a general ordinance on how you handle noise issues, just the same as any incorporated city.
Makes sense.
So I would hope that, I would hope that you have an ordinance.
I don't know.
I would hope that you do.
I doubt it.
I would hope that you have one, because it's not just, it's not just wind projects, I would hope that you control the neighbor's stereo and things like that as well, but that would be separate.
Could be the power line went through last year, the big power line we went through last year, same thing.
Yeah, it, that would be a separate ordinance on how you handle nuisance issues in addition to noise.
Wasn't the, the complaint, he was between whoever is purchasing and the seventy-page article that, or the...
Um, he's got a great point, but if, if I live adjacent to him and I believe that the noise is uncontrollable, there should be something in your ordinance that allows for individuals in the county to complain, for lack of better words, about...
How it would be handled and paid for.
Absolutely, absolutely. There, there, you should have a noise ordinance, I would assume, or a nuisance probably is probably a better word, which includes noise.
Well, it's strange that all the ones that I've read, I haven't seen...
No, I've never seen one.
No, no, it would be a...
Separate ordinance.
Like your other zoning, all of that.
Yeah, one really be tied in with this one, it'd be a totally separate ordinance.
I think it'd be easier to throw the whole damn thing in the garbage can and forget about it and just move on, because all we do is chase each other's around in circles, and we got this, and we got that, and then it's like...
Do we have a complaint procedure when somebody puts up a hog house?
That, that's why I'm saying you should have a separate ordinance on addressing nuisance issues, and if you don't, that's something that, that's probably need to be discussed, but not for the sake of this conversation.
Yeah.
That's a new ordinance that...
Yeah.
You, you draft it regardless of what it's like.
Well...
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
Um, what would be the disadvantage of having increased setbacks as an option for adjacent lenders to sign a waiver, you know, saying, "Okay, you can build it closer to my property," if I sign that waiver versus having just a, a very, very general, smaller setback? Because I, I think that would definitely go a long way from helping the public acceptance of, of an ordinance.
Did they do that down in Green County and Boone County?
I, I don't know.
I tried right through there, it looks like they did, probably.
Cassuth has a, a waiver section in theirs.
I know Webster County does too, because I talked to a Webster County landowner that's near a project, and he was approached by his neighbor, and he said, "Couldn't we move closer?" And he said, "No," because he was not, he said, he was comfortable with saying, "No." And he was, there again, there are setbacks and that, he said, "It's, you know, it's, it's livable," but he, he had the option to say, "No."
Or, "Yes."
But he said, "No." This noise thing too, at sixty decibel, you don't wanna be by anything that continuously puts out sixty decibels of noise.
So we're, we're looking for a complaint area, the clearance of the rotor blades, what was the other?
Well, the whole thing of it, along with all that, Bruce, I think you, if this, a lot of this is based on Webster County's, you have to dig into their contractual, uh, language with the Mid-American power company and, and get that written into the ordinance.
How many years are gonna take to get all this figured out?
I don't think it'll take that long.
Well, right now, we haven't made any progress.
For two months, we've been talking about it. What are we gonna talk about next week?
Talking about December, and it's now March.
What are we gonna do next week?
Well...
The stall tag, he talked him out to.
But we haven't done anything, we just keep going around in circles and saying, "We're gonna push it down the road, and we'll get it next week, and get it next week," and here we still haven't done anything with it, and I'm, I'm frankly getting tired of it.
I think this is a good ordinance, I think we need to make a couple of changes, we should note them, send it back to John, make some changes here, or check into this, bring it back to us next week.
Well, let's, let's do this, let's require John to be here so that we aren't wondering how this is gonna be, and I understand he's probably on the phone, dealing with something, but in my opinion, we, we don't have an idea that, you know, Alyssa said, "Well, this is possibly what it was with the two pages, this is the first..."
I would, yeah.
We're assuming, we're only assuming. So if that's the case, then that's what I would recommend, but I'm, you guys are the ones that are directing this, so somebody make a plan and we'll move forward.
Well...
If you need, we can put another forty pages on this of notes and, and stipulations and, and everything else and move forward, one way or the other. I'm, I'm ready to go.
So one thing I would just for education, the company is not gonna sit down with you at this point and discuss road use agreements and tile agreements, because we have a big concern that it's gonna turn into an actual project.
That's right, right.
So I would caution you against putting that in an ordinance, that's why it's not in the ordinance, except for...
Because the thing is, the ordinance, we don't even have a clue what's coming.
No, and it'll be...
How can you put an ordinance to fit the regulations, to fit something you don't even know what's coming?
Absolutely, but it's just, it's not feasible, um, because we, we're not even certain that it's gonna, it's gonna produce an actual project, so the...
Or even what size, or how tall, how big a mega what, we don't know none of that.
So the ordinance would come first, say, "Yes or no, we would allow or disallow a project," and then the project would succeed, and then the company would say, "Yep, we think this is gonna work," and then the conversation starts, that's why you're not finding them.
So the, the, back to the, one of the original, uh, meetings we had, they have a number what they're trying to sell, and if they only get, you know, say the number's a hundred, and they only get twenty, they're gonna move on, planning to... And if they only get, you know, say the number's a hundred and they only get twenty, they're gonna move on, planning it simple, but we keep.
It's gonna happen.
Keep chasing this.
So, you need to fix it now so you don't have to chase it next time somebody tries.
Absolutely.
Because you've got a three hundred and forty-five KDA line, you're just, you cited the whole county and everything.
We're aware of that.
Yeah, and that makes it, anything along that possible.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, what do you want to do?
Uh, probably we need to add in those couple of items where you need to possibly change the height off the ground clearance, uh, the ability for a neighbor to waive the property line distance.
Are you guys sure you wanna do that? Because the last meeting you said you didn't wanna do it, you're gonna get shoved in there, they will get shoved in there.
Yeah, they can.
It will happen, just like, I, I, I don't disagree with, if, if I like it and you don't, then I'll put six on nine and zero, I, I don't disagree, but they will get shoved in there. That's the only thing.
That's the problem with that, yeah.
About, so that it's no, we don't want them shoved in there, that's how they get shoved in there, we talk about.
Yeah, you got a point there.
Well, that was the, we use brothers or relation, that one likes, one doesn't like, so.
It's not a bad idea, because then you are, you are condensing them to, let's call it a.
A smaller geographic area.
The only issue you would have is, for example, I have a specific, if, if I like it and I have six and he doesn't, now if he has six, he'll have seven, one or two. And that, that's just, you gotta waive the terms and terms, but if you're hearing from opposition that they would rather have that, then that might be a way to go.
So, my, I guess the question I have is, do we feel that this proposed ordinance protects the property rights of people who don't have the land that these, these can be built on, be adjacent properties? Does this do anything to protect their property rights? Or does it completely protect the property rights for people who can't find access to benefits on it? And it's a really, really hard thing to find that balance, and we have to have a hard job, and I, I sincerely appreciate it, but.
Do you have recommendations on what would better protect the adjacent property owners?
You know, I, I don't think there's a perfect, perfect thing, I mean, because, I mean, if you, if you do something to completely protect the adjacent properties, then it's.
Then you damage the other person.
Completely prohibits construction compared to the people that own land that can't do it, so.
I have a recommendation, go out what you're looking at and physically look at the Casoot County ordinance. It does a hell of a good job. If, at the end of the day, if you compare the contracts with Mid-American in Webster County and their ordinance, with this, you will find very few differences. This is just all of the ordinance, theirs is in the contracts, and you need to have it in your ordinance.
That's the point I was trying to make, I think Jerry made it more succinctly, thank you. We never have.
Hey, I got a copy of it.
We have a copy of it, but I guess, I would, Bruce made a good point, what do you task? I don't know, John, and it, it puts him in a rough spot too, he doesn't have expertise in, in these sort of ordinances. But, I would suggest that we, uh, draft it more closely to Casoots and look through that, because it, it's not restrictive. There's heights in the property line?
Occupied residential sixteen hundred.
But, if you've listened to the news lately, they've had, uh, some type of a wind energy company having conversations with them.
That's all it's gonna be too.
And asking about heights and, and projects and stuff, so they are having conversations with the folks in Casoot.
They're looking at changing your ordinance.
And they are, and that is, but the thing of it is.
No, they make it.
Yeah, what I like about that is, they're having the conversations with Casoot County, and that gets to the agreeable.
Webster's.
And that, and that way, it gets to.
It's making more work for yourself.
Well, kind of a common theme though, it's all.
Brings us back to the table three months from now again.
But you know, that's what we're here for.
Casoot County's got sixteen hundred feet setback, they, unless they change that, they won't even have anybody talk to them.
But they are talking to them, and they can talk to them.
They're considering changing your.
Yeah, because they're looking at changing their ordinance.
So, why adopt an ordinance that you, if somebody's wanna do, you need to change it.
But they are gonna rewrite the whole.
Yeah. Nope.
They're gonna change about four numbers.
One thing I caught in some of the.
Four numbers, did you know? Is it gonna be the setback?
I'm, I can tell you what, what they're going to know, I can tell you what they are, what numbers they are.
I would rather see something along those lines than, because if you make this correct, it's gonna include the contractual language that Webster County has with Mid-America to make it correct.
Webster County only gets to have a million dollars a year for property tax, I wonder how much Casoot gets.
Well, and I don't wanna open up another can of worms for this whole, how much money are you gonna get out of these things? I think that's, uh, open for a huge amount of debate from here moving forward, where that shakes out. We've already seen some reductions, we all went to that meeting in Hampton, went from thirty to twenty-seven.
If it goes down to two million dollars, that's better than nothing.
Yeah, but at what cost do you do these things?
I don't know.
Pretty soon, there's gonna be a cost benefit, because, uh, and I realize too, and correct me if I'm wrong, in the protocol that we have to deal with here, and I think it's correct, that we do, whenever, if, if there's an ordinance proposed today, or if it's next week, there's three public readings of it before it's ever passed.
That's right.
I'd like to get it.
We can change it at that point.
Like to get it, you know, to a point, and I think that's what we're working towards, more agreeable, if that's the right word, or more reasonable, if that's the right word, or whatever word you wanna use to begin with, uh, because I'm pretty, this is my opinion, that's what it is, that if we don't, that we go through three readings of an ordinance and it's out of whack, we're gonna be redoing it anyway, because we're gonna hear from.
The point there, when you go into your three, uh, public meetings, if you change something there, you have to go back.
You gotta start all over.
You gotta start all over, so the, the idea is.
Get it set first.
You think it's gonna be.
At least you got the clock started, right now, we've been trying to start the clock for three months.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, that if, if you start something and then you decide after the first reading that you wanna change something, you gotta go back through, republish.
That's right, that's right.
And you start, you, you talk about the clock resetting, it does.
Set back a lead.
It totally resets.
Goes back at least.
If you change something, you need to have three readings on what you changed.
Yep, you gotta publish it, you gotta do the whole, the whole thing, the whole.
So, that kinda speaks to my thought processes and habit, as close as you think humanly possible to avoid things like that.
That's the reason you have public hearings, to make sure you got it correct.
I think the public hearings are good, so it.
Well, I'm not arguing the point, I'm just telling you that you're not gonna speed it up if you think you're gonna change it in the middle of a hearing.
Well, you wanna get it done first, and then.
So, what do you, somebody make him a suggestion here, what direction you wanna go?
Well, this is a suggestion, we tasked John a couple of weeks ago, uh, to look towards Webster County, and he did, and I think he put some of that information together. If we wanna run it through him, by him, with him, however, I would task him to look at Casoot County's, get that up in front of us, look through it per, you know, whatever, if you wanna say there's something overly restrictive in it, maybe tweaked out a little bit, then go that route, because that will contain the language in an ordinance that we need, uh, that covers all the things that we're dealing with, with, with these things.
One of the things I noticed is that John put in what he wrote up, a two hundred and fifty dollar per turbine permit fee. Uh, that's not in Webster County. Casoot County is a thousand. That's what's in their ordinance. So, you know, there's, there's some of those things that you need to, to arrive at some type of a, okay, is two hundred and fifty dollars what we wanna be, or do we wanna go up to a thousand?
That's probably the reason why they don't have any turbines up there.
That's one thing that's gonna change, I think.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, is that somewhere, he must've got that two hundred and fifty dollars out of this room somewhere.
It's in their zoning ordinance.
Turbine zoning.
It's in Webster County's, based on their square footage and what they're building. It'd be in their separate zoning ordinance.
I think we need to.
A lot of your questions and stuff that John, you're here.
I think we need to get with John, explain to him some of our concerns on it, get this back on the agenda for next week and.
But you think it's a good ordinance, don't you, you said that.
I think it's a fairly good ordinance, it needs tweaked a little bit, it needs a little bit added. But we need to.
Let me run up to Jerry.
Get with our attorney and have him tweak it a little bit.
Let me run up to Jerry, John, give me your next week, he might not be here.
And address some of the concerns we have.
They were discussing with.
Whether we can get it, part of the, part of the.
Yeah, overall, I think it's pretty good, I know, I know Eric's concerns are, but it's hard to get an agreement with somebody you don't even know who the agreements are with, or what for yet. The ordinance is more of a.
General diagram.
General diagram, and then you tweak it with your road use agreements and your drainage agreements and things like that down the road. With the company, whoever comes in.
We just have to make sure that we have the ability to tweak something.
Well, it's, it's written in that ordinance where they have to have a road use agreement, a drainage agreement, yeah, so they're.
Well, I'd rather take this tweaking thing, and I'd rather start with the Casoot County ordinance, which is more sound, tweak that and.
What makes it more sound?
It has the, uh, regulatory agreements written in the ordinance, this does not.
Webster County doesn't either.
No, Webster County's regulatory agreements are with Mid-American. And there is a huge.
Like a separate negotiation?
Yeah, basically, but bear in mind, there is a distinct difference between a public utility such as Mid-America and a for-profit company, whomever, not gonna name any companies. And we're tasked with, we don't know who we're dealing with.
No.
We don't, Webster County had the luxury, because this goes back a number of years, Mid-America was in contact with them, and it got tabled, and then it got re-resurrected, they still were in contact. They got to deal with Mid-America, we know right now, we're not dealing with Mid-America, so, we don't have that luxury. We need the ordinance that covers whomever we're dealing with, and if we were dealing with the Mid-America, and it was based fairly closely to Casoot County's, and say Webster County had that particular ordinance of years ago, they'd still have that one project down there.
Are you in favor of wind mills in the county, yes or no? I'm just wondering.
I don't wanna give you a black and white answer on that.
Well, was it appropriate? I mean, yes or no, is that being?
Personally?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, just curious.
And I wanna know why? I've researched this up front, side up, down the other, and this is very simplistic, but the simple part of it is, that the pros, to me, that's me personally, uh, the, the, the pros are not as strong as the cons that come with these right now.
You make that employee's right, right?
Um, yes and no, I mean, I just wanna see a solid ordinance put together. That protects the people out in the county, and the people that are either for or not for them, everyone. So, there could be people that are all gung ho to have how many of these they can get on their property, and they could, they and or we, the county, could be left holding the bag if the things go defunct.
Right.
Without the correct language. So, I'm, I wanna protect everyone involved, whether they're for or against.
Eric, can I ask a question?
Yes.
When they started building hog buildings, they were gonna, those were gonna go, be done using in twenty years. There's buildings out there that are thirty years old, and we haven't got one handed to us. If we go on that speculation, we'll never get nothing moved forward. I don't, and you, you said, take the concrete down four feet, or six feet, or nine feet, hell, they bury groves all the time of, of, of concrete and trees and, and whatnot, out in the middle of fields and farm over it, and how many, uh, homesteads have been buried in, they don't worry about it, they burn what they can burn and bury it and farm right over the top of it. So, we can't, we aren't the police of everything, are we?
Not of everything, but that is where these ordinances are, are written, and, you know, yeah, that might be a, it's not an entire moot point, but like you said Bruce, if it's down to five or six feet, yeah, it's like things getting buried, and, you know, that's part of it. The, the thing is, that whatever the, the depth of deconstruction, that it's deconstructed by the folks that built it, and it doesn't become the, the burden of the landowners and especially of the county. And as long as that's agreeable, that's the thing that I have a big concern about, that we don't go willy-nilly and get an ordinance, and we find out down the road someplace that it wasn't, it wasn't, uh, solid enough.
In your comparison between hog buildings and wind turbines, you've got one slight thing that's a little different. If you take the production tax credit away from wind turbines, they don't, they stop.
Yeah, but everyone stops, the Americans stop.
I know.
Yeah.
And that's what you're saying, and that's what, that's what you're saying, if that would happen, do, are we protected, or are we gonna be hung with those albatrosses out in the country?
How about the seventy percent farming credit?
They'll be lined up to tear them down to scrap them.
How about the seventy percent credit on your insurance?
You can't hire, you can't hire Americans in the fire range state.
Oh, the farmer's gonna quit raising corn because you're going seventy percent credit on the farmer.
That's a little bit rude.
You can't do that, it's a half a million dollar project that they.
Well, let's move forward since we've.
Federal crop insurance is subsidized at seventy percent, they're gonna quit raising corn if they don't have seventy percent subsidy.
Everything in this world is subsidized, absolutely everything.
So, this is a point of order, keep in mind that if you tweak it, you are then going to have to do the research to determine if it's prohibitive or restrict, or it allows it, and then we're right back to, do we want it or do we not want it? And that's where you guys said, Webster County. So, whatever you add to it, you're going to have to do the research to decide if that's prohibitive or not.
That was, that's what my point was earlier, when you said we told John to do what we wanted him to do, and he did what we wanted him to do.
That's right, so if you add the switch to it, you'll have to, to make sure that it's prohibitive or not, depending on what your goal for this project is, which we eliminated that by doing Webster County's work. So, you can do that, but I, you're just, you're starting back over.
I don't think it's a supervisory job to tell the farmer or property owners, you can do this, or you can do that on your property. You gotta get along with your neighbor, if you don't, way, you're not gonna survive out in the country, so I don't think it's our job to say, you gotta do this, or you gotta do that, or you can have this, or you can have that. We set the rules that could go either way, which I'd still think, you, you gotta still get along with your neighbor, so.
I agree.
I think we just tweak it and go with it, and when we have it come up, negotiate it.
So, John is in court, Carl just ran upstairs, John is available next week. Next week, we're gonna put it on the agenda, we're gonna put it on the agenda after we get done with the other business, so that.
Right.
This is forty, almost fifty minutes of.
Nothing.
Nothing. We haven't accomplished anything other than the fact that one party wants to go one direction and, I, 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 whatever you guys wanna do, however you wanna handle it, if you want this to go to John and have him look at Casoot versus Webster, see if we can't come to a middle of the road, if you wanna, like Dave says, tweak it, you guys make the decision.
I'd like to see the tweaking done with the Casoot County ordinance.
I'd see tweaking done with Webster County ordinance, they've been successful in everything they've done down there. I would move we adopt the Webster County office ordinances with tweaking to be done next week when John's here. Proposal that we at least look at the Webster County ordinances for next week.
With the changes that you.
Does that include the seventy pages of contract?
I don't think that's flippy at this point.
That is. Because that's where the regulations are. There's nothing in the ordinance.
That could be part of the tweaking, I guess.
That's, in a more simplistic form, Casoot County's ordinance has that in it already. I'd rather have something that contains all the appropriate language with the regulations and tweak that, than try to, and Carl mentioned too, how long does it take to sort through seventy-some pages of Mid-America contracts, when Casoot essentially has that written into their ordinance? And that's what we're working on, I'd rather take that to any degree of tweaking than try to tweak this ordinance and then try to sort through, uh, a separate contract and incorporate it. Because Casoot County's essentially.
Gentlemen, we have a motion on the floor.
So, we have to.
Need a second, I'll second that.
We have a motion, now you can discuss.
Yes.
I'd prefer to see the tweaking done Casoot County's ordinance, because it contains the language that's necessary in an ordinance, period. Webster County's does not, minus their contractual agreements with Mid-America, I don't think.
The contractual agreements will come with whoever company comes in, I think. It's hard to make contractual agreements with somebody you don't even know what's coming.
We're making a huge assumption there.
Where is the seventy pages that go with the? Where's the seventy pages that go with this article?
Webster County contracts with Mid-America.
This is Cassuth, and it's not seventy pages, Eric. This is Cassuth right here.
I know what Cassuth looks like.
There's no seventy pages with it, what he's arguing about.
There is seventy pages with Webster County's. It is in contract. It's not in the ordinance.
Right.
And it is a contract with a public utility. All their deconstruction, all their, all that stuff is in their signed contract with Mid-America.
That's negotiated between the two companies, the county and the company, at the time of construction.
You're dealing with a public utility versus a private company.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Next week, we'll get John to look this, hopefully over this week, and I guess we'll move forward from there.
It's going to be a decision, no matter what we do, but we've got to get, got to get going. We can't keep kicking her down the road.
We have on Drainage District, is that just this payment thingy, or are we going to Drainage?
Into Drainage.
Into Drainage.
Make a motion to go to Drainage.
Motion to go to Drainage?
I can see.
In a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, people.
Then we're even Drainage. I mean, is it to this one bill?
Yeah, just that one bill, yeah.
Well, she wanted me to sign it last week, and we can't.
Right. Well, it won't take long.
She didn't sign it, but we can't, we can't pay it.
Oh, man, I'll tell you. We can blame the EPA for a hog operation. We don't have any scapegoat here. We've got to take the bow on the horns. Thank you.
We've been waiting here for twenty minutes.
Yeah.
Where are you going?
Getcha.
Where is he?
Don't throw all your paper over here. What's this? O B and W test control, or spraying?
Yeah.
What is this? This is for Jacobson's.
Engineering.
Is this the ag well for your, is this the stuff that he's done, or stuff that he's going to do, or? Make sure they haven't sprayed anything. This is just the.
The last year's one, I believe. Pocahontas found it.
Well, wasn't they paid for it? Did they found it?
They'll pay for it.
Oh.
They're the control counties.
Perfect.
We have to reimburse them.
But like half, or according to our.
acreage, I suppose.
Yeah, according to the acreage percent line. And I don't remember what it was.
You have a total bill there, or?
Seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-one.
Seventy-eight, seventy-one, twenty-five.
That's the total? And we don't know what our percentage is, or is that our percentage?
No, no, they don't. They would have to levy it. And I think there's other stuff that they've done too, so it'll be a bigger levy than just that thing.
We are now in Drainage for Pocahontas Humboldt seven, no, one, seven, one, approval of a claim for an open ditch strain that is with B and W Control Specialists. I vow governor, do you want to repeat what you just said? This is our portion of what we share with them.
That's the bill. Yeah, that's the bill that came from Pocahontas. They found it. And we have to.
It was billed on ten, twenty-sixth of seventeen.
Mm-hmm. Done then.
So, they've paid the bill, and now they're trying to recoup our portion of it?
Right.
I was just ready to levy it on what like our share of the percentage of the seventy-eight, seventy-one, twenty-five.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the claim for ditch one seventy-one.
I second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
So, that's the total. We need to get the percentage of that's what Humboldt County is going to pay to Pocahontas County?
When they levy.
Seventy-eight, what?
Seventy-eight, seventy-one, twenty-five is the total for that. There's our ditch combination. We'll get a percentage of that based on our.
Acres.
Acres of the ditch.
District.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? I can sign it. Motion carries. There's also a bill here for Jacobson Westergaard that on, we need a motion for that, or just?
No, can't have that. It's not under.
All right.
You can motion if you want.
Anything else? Do you have anything else?
No, hopefully we're okay this week.
Okay, I got, I got one question. I mentioned it to you maybe two weeks ago. That HKH one hundred and one thirty-one ninety-three, which is up in the far northeast part of the county, we had somebody fly it with drone.
Yes, I have the video of it.
Yeah. Because it, it's, I think it needs to be looked at. But the issues we have in that one is, who's, what's the proper procedure to go through when we're, I don't know if the H is for Humboldt or Hancock at first H.
Is that three?
It's for counties.
Yeah.
And I was trying, I doubt we are, because we're just on the lower three quarters of mile of it. I would assume it must be Hancock, Cassuth, Humboldt.
Was it up like east of?
Very northeast corner. It runs through Cassuth and off into Hancock County.
Yeah.
East of Laverne, way in the.
Northeast of Laverne.
Northeast, northeast, yeah.
Would you suggest we find out, so that we can move?
Yeah, because I think we need to get that looked at.
I do too.
Because when I walked it last fall, some of the mains are half full of dirt even, that are coming into the ditch, because it's so full.
Rick, is that the same one that's got the dilapidated old bridge?
That really isn't a bridge. It's two telephone poles with planks on it.
Well, somebody had a bridge one time, but is that the same?
Yeah.
So, I've got video footage of that, but it agrees with Rick's observation, so.
So, do you want, are you instructing Rick to call and see if he can get something moving?
I think we need to, possibly. The only issue we do have is it dumps into Prairie Creek, and Prairie Creek is full of beavers.
Damn beavers.
I mean, there's multiple beaver dams in that thing, and I think that's some of the issue. It backs up the water, that backs up into the dredge, and then it, you know, if we don't get rid of the beavers, it doesn't help to clean up, clean the dredge, because the water will back up and then it.
Suggestion on that?
What's that?
Well, we could talk amongst ourselves, but like you said, the biggest thing is to get the other two counties and figure out the protocol.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Along with that, ask them, as we could discuss amongst ourselves, that, what Rick said, that there's beaver dams in a creek, but, so it may not be IE in the Drainage District.
Right.
But that's where the Drainage District water goes, that we make an allowance to remove said beavers out of there, and then that gets billed back like all other beaver removal to that Drainage District. Because if we don't do that, and clean it out and don't do that, the clean out wasn't near as effective.
Yeah.
You're right back again.
You see any problems with that?
Well, yeah, I do, because you'll never get rid of them, because there's just too much timber around there, and they just love it. So, I don't, I don't know if you, I don't know what to do, because.
Sign up, they won't provide.
They don't, you know what I thought of, was just confirming the beavers. Then they'll never come back.
If they make their own pond with a bunch of trees around.
Well, my suggestion would be dynamite, but I don't know.
Because they have cleaned the beaver dam out a few years back, and it, with the months it was back in.
In the Prairie Creek area?
Yeah.
There used to be an old boy that takes quarter sticks and dynamite, toss them in the dredge ditch, weight them down so they float down into the.
And run?
We don't want to be right next to that.
That's one of our guys, name was.
One of our guys.
I think I know who you're talking about. Did he move to Missouri? I think he did.
But yeah, find out who's the lead county on that one there, and we can discuss with them if we need to do something.
Okay.
All right.
I don't know if it's affecting the drainage up in Cassuth County, or.
Can't be helping it any.
Well, that ditch has a fair amount of slope to it, so it doesn't back up much further than the block top, but.
That's a good suggestion.
Well, if we ever get out of the snow mode, and we get back to the rain mode, we might see what's backed up and.
I seen a guy putting anhydrous on Saturday down by South Estadio.
Picture so we know he was heading the drainage.
I couldn't believe it. I could not believe it.
Of course, they never have had this much snow.
They found.
But there's snow in the fence line. He is.
And he was still putting it in.
Yeah.
They found some WHO, they were putting anhydrous on down Southern Illinois, so hopefully there's farming going on somewhere.
Yeah, picture of seed notes down by Granger.
Yeah, they got a sweet corn guy that worked his patch down there too, I seen.
Are we, have you heard anything from Rick on any update?
No, he's, they're working on a reclassification thing. They're trying to find out some parcel ownership. Vacated alleys and streets that don't have proper ownership, basically.
Well, I see they're doing a, hauling a bunch of pipe up here to north of town, and they got a bunch of it sitting in a big cluster there that must have got too wet, because some of it looks really muddy that they, I don't know who took the chance of the semi going out there, but I don't think it looked good. There's a big cubby of pipe in one group that they're going to have to haul out to the field, which will get more compaction, but oh, well. Well, if that's all we got, then entertain a motion.
Motion to go out Drainage.
Out Drainage.
Second that.
Second. On any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? We're out. Then I suppose we better go do our claims and our stuff, so they can.
Get working on them.
Good. Thank you, Trish.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the claims. It looked like a hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty cents in general claims, thirteen thousand six twenty-three thirty in drainage. I moved approval of the claims as presented.
Well.
How much, how much was drainage?
I had thirteen thousand six thirty.
Thirty-three thirty. All right.
So, wait till.
We better wait till we get a recorder.
We might get yelled at for, her sign's not flipped up.
Oh.
Sorry, Bob, I was going to ask you that.
You get it.
What?
Yeah.
Probably don't need it.
You got new footage?
Yeah.
Oh, where are you going with this?
Limited.
You can just recess.
This sounds probably.
It's like thirty, thirty seven cloudy area.
It's really.
It's cooking.
I don't think so.
It's crazy.
It's a ground wire for the ignition.
I'll be darned. Thank you.
I've got a big. I'm sort of, I've got a weakness for anything.
I made a motion to approve those numbers.
If you don't, then I'm going to suspend.
For what?
Claims.
Oh, okay.
I can redo it.
Yes.
No, you were, you were still on camera, so who was the second?
We didn't have a second.
Like I did.
Oh, yeah, we got a second.
You did?
I did. Did you have that just waiting on?
Okay.
Yeah, matches.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the claims, and the numbers are one thirty-four, five, four, one, three, oh, and one thirteen, six, twenty-three, thirty with drainage, right, Carl?
Correct.
Motion in a second, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. All right. All right. All hands in the seat, while you go, going to go into the resolution for twenty eighteen dash seven, excuse me, seven. Does the box already go in? Let me figure out this.
You should have a copy of this in your packet.
Dear welcome.
I think it's stuck in my windmill stuff.
Oh, you can have this one. This is.
I put my windmill pile.
Not a problem. This is an ordinance I had John put together for us. When we approved the cap grant last week, we were essentially entering into an agreement with the City of Humboldt to go ahead and apply for this.
This is a bridge, right?
Yep. And so, we thought it should probably be in resolution form, so there's something on file.
Okay. So, we would need a motion for twenty eighteen dash seven.
I make a motion, we adopt resolution twenty eighteen dash seven.
We have a motion?
I'll second that. I do have one question on the number three part there.
Right. This mirrors the City of Humboldt exactly.
Okay, I was wondering if the city was also in on that?
Yes.
That was my question.
The wording, as far as what goes below, is pretty much the same. John said he wasn't sure if you wanted to commit to number three, but it is a county, I mean, it will be a county purpose. I mean.
You guys, I heard the same way I did.
I think I understand your concern.
They're going to maintain it?
I.
That's what I thought.
That's what I thought, too.
This money would be for the construction, and then the city would maintain it. So, I'm.
I'd like to strike number three.
I would agree with that.
And that is what they said? That's the way I understand.
I agree.
So, I'll amend it. I guess Carl would have to do that, or can I do that?
Carl, you want to amend the motion?
It was Dave.
Dave made.
All right, sorry.
I'll amend it.
Amend the motion.
Strike number three out of there.
To resolution twenty eighteen dash seven, to strike number three off of the list.
And Rick, you were the second.
Yes, I was. I'll second that amended motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Should we sign this one or that one?
The motion.
You need it back?
Nope, we need it back.
Do you guys have a cap on what you're committing to this? I mean, I know they estimated a hundred thousand for you guys, and a hundred thousand for the City of Humboldt, but it's a big sum back at forty-five million. Are you, I mean, there's only eight hundred thousand in grant money for something.
I think technically, if we want to follow Robert's order.
I think this motion, I think this just allows us to apply for the grant. We can make that decision later, I think. I think this just gets a grant going. We don't have to accept a grant. I think that's right. That's what we're told, anyway.
All right, I might have to help him walk through this again. Peggy thinks that with Robert's rules borders means we accepted the resolution and its original content, that we need to go back and reject it.
What normally what you do is, you vote on the motion as amended, then you go back to your original motion and either vote it up or down, because there is a first and a second on that.
In order to make sure that it's legal?
All right.
I move we approve them.
No, you don't need another motion. You just have to go back and vote on the original motion.
As amended.
The orig, no, the original motion was to approve the resolution just as it is.
Okay. And we had a first and a second on that, so we needed to take a vote and then amend it.
Just need a vote, yeah.
Right. So, now, all those in favor of denying it?
All in favor of the ordinance?
No, you have to say in favor of it, as the way.
In favor of it.
And if there's no response, then it dies for lack.
Okay. There's no response, so it dies for lack. So, now we'll take the amended?
Nope, the amended, you already.
We already passed it. All right. So, now we're good.
Yeah, that's pretty official now.
Thank you, Peggy, for keeping us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure you caught both of those there and leave a hand.
Good point.
All right. Now, we have on our list, accepted place on file a recorded quarterly report ending March thirty-one of eighteen. We should have a copy there.
Yes, you should. If you have questions, I'm sure Diana would be able to help you out.
Here's our little tally sheet there on the right hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure you caught both of those there and leave a hand.
Good point.
All right, now, we have on our list, accept and place on file a recorder quarterly report ending March thirty-one of eighteen. We should have a copy there.
Yes, you should. If you have questions, I'm sure Diana'd be able to help you out, um.
Here's our little tally sheet there on the right hand.
Yep.
Down.
Been pretty active, it looks to me like.
Oh, looks like.
I'll make a motion to accept the.
Her quarterly.
Reporter quarters, reporter quarterly report.
We have a motion?
Second.
In a second?
Second.
All those, or any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign? Accept her report. Do you want me to sign yours or mine?
Oh, yeah. Usually it takes your stamp.
Okay.
Well, they get, you know, you get to the point where they gotta renew them, everybody renews them every seventy years and. Different looking, you mean?
Yeah, it looks awesome.
All right, next, uh, we accept and place on file quarterly report for the sheriff. The numbers should be there in front of you.
Would that mileage be from transports, you think?
I would assume.
Or delivery of notices, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, that's probably what it is for delivery of notices. Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the sheriff's quarterly report.
A second to motion?
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carries.
Here comes the bad one.
You know how bad it is when you look at your watch and it, I just looked at it for the last one I saw him, and my, that. That I can't remember in two minutes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the auditor's quarterly report.
There we are, we have a motion.
I'll second.
In a second, any discussion?
Don't make sure the money everybody else does.
You need to up your thing there, you gotta get more money in.
I know. I'm about to start knocking on doors.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carries. She puts the date on, so I don't have to look at my watch again.
Good idea.
All right. You got all the quarterly reports in, or steaming towards the committee report?
What month are you in?
April.
April.
Even though it feels like December.
On April fourth, I went down to Fort Dodge to the Corn Belt Annual Meeting. They represent about forty-some counties in Iowa. Forty-one. They distribute electricity all over the place. And as far as generation, they talked about how much comes from power, comes from coal, and how much electricity and so forth. This is kinda interesting. They sell ten different co-ops representing forty-one different counties. And one of the big things we had utilized from them is their revolving loan fund. We get to borrow that zero interest money from those, pay it back in ten years many times. We did that for the part, for the reimport, of the remodeling of the law enforcement center. And then we did it for daycare and we do it for the, all kinds of things. And then they had, after the business meeting was over, they had a futurist there talking about, it's always interesting to list these guys, how much it comes true, you don't know, but they're talking about, if we lived a year two thousand, twenty-one, you'd never die. That's how much research they got up here for medicine now. It probably won't happen, but that's what they're talking about. Another interesting thing was, they have a plant now that generates electricity. You go, your little flower pot generates electricity. I don't know how that happens. All kinds of rubegop things they talked about. Uh, they talked about, there've been four, four phases of changes in this world since mankind first came about. First it was fire, where you learn to cook your meat. That was a big change. The second was a wheel, wooden wheel where you haul people around. The third was agriculture, where you learn to feed the people. And the last one was technology, and we're in that right now. And that's really a big one. There only been four major changes in the world since the start of mankind. Start of mankind. This is this guy's speaker, anyway. He has a seat on the end of his chair. I encourage you guys to go down there. It's kinda fun. It's, it's the only meeting I had all week, I think.
I didn't have any official meetings.
What did they ask?
Fast Monday on, uh, April second, have the, uh, law enforcement, uh, meeting, law enforcement center. And then, um, officially on the half of drainage, on Wednesday, I went out and looked at a, uh, drainage tile that goes underneath Highway fifteen up near south of West Bend, so. Took a look at that, it's been kind of an ongoing thing, met with the DOT folks, so wanted to make you aware of that. That went real well. And that's all I had officially last year, last week.
This has been like a long week.
Yeah, it did.
Last year.
Feels like it was January all last week, and it still does.
Feel like you missed summer somewhere.
Somewhere, I think we're missing something.
Monday I had the LAC meeting. Uh, Wednesday I went over to Pokie at nine in the morning, uh, for IDBA. Probably the topic over there was, uh, Buon Vista, they didn't, they decided to drop out and not pay their dues, which is one of the three counties that we supported in the lawsuit, with two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Serious?
Yeah. But I'm, I think a lot of it was due to budget concerns, cause they were really strapped for money, the way it sounded. In the article I read, that he had a copy in the paper.
What county is that?
Buon Vista. They had a nine percent carryover. So they were shaving money wherever they could, I think, and that might've been part of the reason. John was gonna visit with them and see if there's something else, other than money, why they dropped out. Um, see if there was something going on that he didn't know about, cause he hadn't had any communications with them. It was just kinda out of the blue, so.
That's too bad.
Uh, considering what everybody else has done.
I can say concerning everybody else, but their neck on the.
Yeah.
Well, we got two more years of that, three years?
We're done.
We're done.
We're done. We still pay our yearly dues, but, uh, the litigation part is all settled up, uh, all paid for, all the legal fees are paid for now, and so it was good to have that behind us.
Yeah.
This is the, while we're talking about the dues, what are the dues approximately?
Our are somewhere between six and seven thousand, I don't know exactly.
Somewhere in there, yeah, I'd have to look it up.
Somewhere in there.
Okay.
It's based on the amount of acres you have and population.
Okay.
More so acres of drainage.
Well, that is just an unfortunate deal all the way around there.
Yeah, and like you say, I, I'm sure a lot of it is financial reasons, cause when you gotta shave money, you gotta cut those extras.
Wherever you gotta think you're able.
Yeah. But John was gonna visit with them and find out if there's something else, other reasons that they would've dropped out for. Other than that, we talked about, um, also, I think something we visited about was the threshold of where it goes from a work order to an improvement, or, you know, when you clean the drainage ditch out. So then, um, engineering costs get a little more expensive when you have to have it engineered versus just a, a work order. Relying on your local contractor to do it correctly. Um, I think we do have good local contractors that I do trust to do it correctly, but. When you get into some of these bigger, bigger projects, like we had that one over by Thorly, if we have an engineering firm watching them, it would've been a disaster. So there is times that you need them and sometimes you, you don't.
But that was a big project as well, so it all had to be.
Yeah. So that's all I had, was those two meetings.
Okay. I had, uh, one that I had was supposedly cancelled, but it's been moved forward. Just FYI, it's with the Cub Scouts. The only phone number that he knew was mine, so.
Oh.
I said, well, thank you for helping myself. So I'm meeting with the Cub Scouts tomorrow night, and I wondered.
Are you a nice Cub?
No.
Oh, okay.
But I wondered, do they, would they be able to, they're doing a study on county governments. Would they be able to sometime come up like for a walk through the courthouse with me?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so I can, I didn't wanna put them out on the spot and then have them show up, and then you guys know you aren't able, but. They just called and they're doing something on, uh, studying, way city and the county governments, so they.
They could probably come watch our chairman operate some Monday morning, too.
Yeah, well, after this morning. And Peggy has to set this all straight. Thank goodness she was here, but anyways, that's tomorrow night, so that's all I had. She has, uh, she can hear the.
Yep. Um, I rewrote the zoning permit, um, the ad that appeared in the paper. Um, I've got some extra copies from the press too, if they'd like to see it. Um, had Melody's phone number and her contact information on it. Um, did change some other wording around in there, ran it by Brian Scow to make sure he was okay with it. He said everything was fine. So we've got his phone number, his, uh, email address in there. Um, also, they can, we're gonna update that copy on the website for the zoning permit, cause that one also has Melody's contact information on it, so we'll get that uploaded. So if somebody wants to have a copy on the internet, they can fill it out there. So just wanted to run it by you.
We still are, um, having issues of a couple of buildings that, you know, if they get started, they still have to go through the zoning, uh, steps with the county, just, you know. Just cause you live out on a farm doesn't mean you don't have to go according to following the rules. We have a couple of buildings that just popped up and, and we didn't know anything about it, so I would encourage anyone that's building anywhere to make sure you go through that, so you don't get scalding from someone, so.
And I did have a conversation with Brian about those that the assessor caught on her drive-throughs that did not have a permit, but they're definitely with a house or a building or something added. And he's gonna go by and see if he can discuss that with those homeowners and get the permit filled out and, uh, make sure everything's. So he'll try to pick those up. I told him to get a hold of the assessor's office, cause they would know the locations.
All ready?
Um, what else did I have?
Anything else there in your file?
Um, another zoning thing for you to sign. I need Rick to sign that one.
You need the stamp?
Um, no, just regular sign. Oh, some more updates on the OPI thing. I send that to you because it's confidential. Um, wanted to let you know the status of how I give you status on the budget, so you know, but this is where zoning is at, and safety, and, uh, environmental hazardous waste and HIPAA as of the end of March. So they're all in good standing, there is money there, they're not close to going over their budgets. But I wanted you guys to see those too, so you're aware.
When is your safety rating Thursday?
It's Thursday. Uh, sounds like the morning, we have the Blue Boys coming in. And then in the afternoon, the State Patrol is coming in, so. Wasn't able to do our normal Iowa central raining work, like slips, trips, falls, ladders, they clean, uh, confined spaces. So we'll end up doing that at a later.
I ran into Melody the other day, I was down getting my taxes doing, and she was walking down the street, and I asked her about safety. She said, she thought that was part of emergency management, so I think she'll continue doing it safely.
Yeah, I think she's gonna continue doing safety. Uh, she also still forwards up the emails for, uh, uh, drug testing.
So is that gonna be a secondary rub then, Ben?
Yeah, it's, it'll be out at our office, if anybody wants to.
I need to caution you guys that if she is going to continue, we'll probably have to have her board meet and allow that to happen, because this is a county function, not an emergency management function, so. And she had even suggested that, that she'd probably have to have her board okay it, but it should probably sooner rather than later. Otherwise, it's gonna get lost and forgotten in there and could be an issue in the future, so we might wanna try to get that straightened.
Chairman of the board, you or Dan?
Dan.
Dan.
With this opioid stuff.
One of the two of you can maybe get.
Dan and Dean.
Dan and Dean, you're not involved.
Board.
Okay.
You're just a board member.
Yeah.
You want me to get ahold of Dan and.
Dan is the president, or the chairman, and Dean is the vice. The other reminder would be, Peggy, we have that radio Oxbow Friday, excuse me, Wednesday night at five thirty for the fire. Make sure you put that on.
All five of us might be there.
Five of us could be in attendance to that, so we're in.
And then explain again?
That was Thursday night at Oxbow.
Five thirty.
Okay.
For the fire radio update.
No, I don't think so. I haven't, I wasn't aware of that.
No, no. Oh, they didn't set a meeting the other night.
No.
We were waiting, they, they gotta get their five oh one, three, C.
Rick, do we have a housing meeting tomorrow at ten o'clock?
I got it written down.
So do I. Can't remember what.
But I didn't see nothing on.
It's you two guys.
City Hall at ten o'clock, it says.
That's what I got written down.
See you there, maybe?
Yeah.
Um, the other thing I, and I just, I'm gonna throw this out there, I doubt, I don't have a clue, I'm not a computer guru. I still think that somehow, I'd like to figure out a way that we can put on our website for, um, people that, you know, uh, lack of a better term, reporting ditches. And I know Humboldt's doing it, and I don't know how they do it with, you know, if you got a pothole or whatever. For ditch cleanouts, for, um, roads that haven't been graded, for, you know, whatever. I just think that if we could put that in there, some way of tracking, because we're still, you know, trying to improve the the performance of the county, um, how, I don't know how we do that. I'm not a technical guy that, I have a hard enough time operating the phone when somebody calls me, so if it takes an extra minute, that's me trying to figure out, get the right button pushed, so. Um, and Ben, I know you said that we, for, with the fall we had last year, we had a good number of our stuff cleaned out. Intakes cleaned up. Uh, but I just think that, you know, we gotta stay on top of all of the, you know, and if we can help by putting something up that, you know, in today's day and age, they can send it in, go on the website. We can monitor it by saying, oh, see, this one was last November turned in and hasn't been done. I don't know, if it would work, if it won't, uh, it's a pipe dream, however.
We've got an active database through the Service Bureau. I just don't know that board members have access to the Service Bureau. I, I think that's private, uh, not public. Uh, I know we can log into it on the laptop and have it available for you guys to, uh, view it if you come up to the office. This is a list that we've got of, of work orders that are not completed, that have been called in. Everything consists of ditch announce, uh, mailboxes that we've put back temporarily, that we know that now that the process is going out, we'll be going out and putting a new poll back in. Uh, requests from some people to have little bump outs for their mailboxes. Signs, trees, uh, usually whenever a phone call comes in, we automatically fill out a work order. Sometimes it starts as a work request until somebody can view it to confirm that it's an issue in county property as opposed to private property.
I'm just trying to figure out a way that when someone jumps you, walk through Hy-Vee or standing somewhere and, hey, I turned in a I wanted a intake cleaned out in a ditch, and I did it last, God, I can't remember when. Okay, well, this way we could have the ability to look at that and say, oh, it's never been turned in, or it has been turned in and we just kinda got it off, lost in the paper shuffle. That's why it's tracking, you know? I think that when we have the ability to say, yep, it was done and we did it last September, as opposed. I think that when we have the ability to say, "Yep, it was done and we did it last September," as opposed to can't find that we ever did it. That alienates everyone some.
Or you don't know when it was turned in, or.
And for us, the only way we have is I have to call you. Sometimes I know you're a busy guy. When you answer the phone, "Yeah," I don't know what you want. I'm not saying that, you know? We get tired of, you know, I, I get tired of bothering you, 'cause I know you're busy.
And, and the only, the only thing that I can think of off the top of my head would be to have a, uh, some sort of a billable form on the website where somebody could, uh, report an issue. And, and that would maybe, you know, come to our office, and then we would create a work order, but I don't know, I don't know a way that we can take the tool that we're currently using and put it on the county's website.
Well, I don't think we have to put that on, I'm just looking for something that.
Yeah, and this is an ongoing project, I got sidelined with budgets and everything and wasn't able to follow up on it. But we're still in line to get a website upgrade before the end of the fiscal year. Um, I've talked to Solutions, I need to get ahold of that company called ReVise, um, there's that, uh, two or three other ones that I had visited with earlier that I need to get back to again. But ours, the current system that we have, we can't do this on. It wouldn't allow you to do something like that. But in an upgrade, we would be able to, because this is current technology, this is something Humboldt does now. Humboldt can do it, we can do it.
And I know Humboldt, they switched their website designer, the city did, and saved a ton of money.
And I think it was that ReVise.
Yeah, I don't know who it was, I know they made the comment that they'd switched and they saved a.
But there's another company over, that Wright County uses, that's very good, uh, we talked to Solutions. Um, the hard part is, how you get proposals from people that are apples to apples when you don't know what the.
Apple is.
Yeah, you don't know what it is. So I can't do that, I don't have the, it's either, um, same thing with putting the new locks on the courthouse doors. I need to have an architect or somebody draw up the specs. I don't know what to put in a spec sheet to even tell these people what we want. Um, I could check with some other counties to see, some do RFPs all the time, request for proposals. Maybe someone's done a request for proposal before for a website upgrade, I don't know. But I need to get going on that part and get things to you guys, so we can get a decision made. If we can't have it in place by the end of June, maybe we can at least have someone picked.
Right.
Yeah. And have it start like in July, so.
Well, I think it just makes us all accountable, it would be, you know, if, if Bill Johnson said, "Well, my road hasn't been graded and I turned it in in June, and it's now September," well, yeah. Have you really watched that close?
It'd be the same thing for drainage, or if there was some other issue in the courthouse or something, that could be.
And it'd hold us accountable, and then also be able to show, "Hey, here it was, we, we did that, clean out, we did that." So I just think that it would help improve our standings with people, and it would help us be more efficient on what we're doing, so. That's.
I think that's a great idea, thought process, and hopefully can get accomplished, 'cause Peggy.
Yeah, there's just been a lot of projects lately.
Yeah.
I know.
The tower and this, and the secondary road, which brings me to another issue. Um, you had talked about doing an ad for a shop, not a shop foreman, uh.
Supervisor.
Supervisory.
Superintendent, whatever.
Road superintendent, yes. Um, are you still interested, and in what timeframe are you looking at? Right now, we're still accepting applications for a county engineer?
I think we need to get through our engineering decision first, our engineer decision first, and then go from there.
Think that'd be a job of the engineer to advertise for that position, once we get it done.
Yeah, let's get our engineer position filled, and then we'll go from there.
And we did have discussion on that, and we've got some, whether it's from Pocahontas County or whatever there, job description. We tasked ourselves with kinda looking through that, we, we talked about it here a few weeks ago. We could still be in the process of looking through that, but I'd probably agree with Rick, to kinda do one thing at a time at this point.
Okay, sounds good.
So we don't get too much going on.
I got one thing I wanna throw out there and get the board's opinion on. I had a conversation about, um, being, we had all this ice lately. And they've been doing a good job of sanding the curves and the stop signs and the center lines when it needs it. Uh, the concern was, a lot of times it gets a little bit of ice. And we have like three or four places in the county where we have dredge ditches along block tops, where there is no guardrails or cables. I was wondering, we should authorize sanding in those areas when conditions require it. 'Cause currently we don't, do we?
We haven't.
Oh, have you been doing that?
Like south of Thor, there's, there's no rail for that first mile. We've been sanding thicker, I would say. We've been throwing it out a lot, thicker on that stretch, because instead of just going into the ditch, you're talking.
Yeah, if you, and upside down in water possibly, wouldn't be.
Been addressing that with additional, that's awesome.
I think for the people that know it's there, it's probably not that big a deal, but someone cutting across county, county block top, don't know it's there, and you go peeling out there, you could have a mess, like you say, so.
Glad to take care of that.
Good. In conjunction with our discussion, and I, I know what Ben's talking about, 'cause we were talking about that one day in your office and looked at your work order.
The work order tool.
Tool. So realistically, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, if it gets on there, you guys have real good success with making sure those get done.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a, more or less, it's a glorified spreadsheet.
Yeah.
That you can sort by who the foreman is, so the foreman can say, "Okay, sort by foreman." And it'll just show the issues that they've got in their area.
Right, but I mean, my point of it is, you have that tool, basically, like you said, it just basically keeps track of. If it gets on there, you've got a handle on it, and I think what, our discussion was, to get it on there. So that, you know, and I like the website stuff that we talked about, uh, because that, I think, has probably been probably the loss of, I don't know, communication, or just lost in the shuffle type deal. Where, yeah, something needs to be done, but it never gets where it needs to be on that work order spreadsheet, if you will.
If they don't call in to our office, it doesn't make it onto the.
Somebody's legitimate concern, it never gets posted to where, yes, okay. And like you said, you go out and look at it, say, "Yep, that's, so we're gonna have it, and we're gonna do it." You get it there, you're in good shape, but we need to get it on that.
Onto that.
Yes, that's the discussion we had, and that's, I think, our discussion, so we don't get legitimate concerns on there. We don't get them noted, 'cause if nobody knows, it's hard to get anything taken.
Well, and like Bruce said, if they jump you in the grocery store and they're asking you about this stuff, you know, about all you can say is, "Call the engineer's office and have them put it on, put it on the work order tool." So that they can get it, you know, then you know what date it was.
Bingo.
That they called in, uh.
We have the tool, we just need to make sure that it gets on, on there.
Perfect. Alright, anything else? Our short agenda come to the end.
Roads will be getting closed a week from today now.
Move back a week, huh?
Changing the sign.
Yeah.
The sign should be changed now. Uh, I sent Dave out this morning when I came up here to go change the sign. So it should be updated.
Uh, one guy said he can't plant corn this year because he gotta do his road.
Well.
Before he settled down, he says, "I can go to the other farmer, no problem."
The greatness of corn, he might not be able to plant in the snow, and we don't have any control over it. Alright, I didn't entertain a motion to adjourn.
Slow move.
Motion and a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign, rouse ten.